We have all five, we have all five members of our board here tonight. Two, three here in town offices and two remote via Zoom. Sarah's back. The meeting recording is on, right Sarah?
There was a nod.
That was a nod.
Yes.
Very good, awesome, thank you. I'm monitoring too many different screens, so I may need vocal confirmation. So I'm going to call the meeting, I'm going to open the meeting at 5:01 PM. I'm going to propose that we move that A and R application to the top of our agenda. I think it'll be quick and it might slightly delay the start of our public hearing, but I think that should be fine. Do you concur Judy?
Sure.
Okay, alright, we have the Maris, Maris is here. We have their application, they paid their A and R fee, thank you very much. We have their plans. So let me share electronically their, their A and R plan. Right? I think everybody should be able to see that. If you guys here are going to look at it physically, there it is.
Okay.
So laid out neatly. Perhaps Cynthia, you'd like to just tell us a little bit about what, what's going on here and what you're, what you'd like to do?
I think Michael will.
What's that?
Tell what, what you want to do, what your plan is.
My plan is to sell the less than four acres parcel.
Did they just freeze? I see we're still around and they're completely frozen. Oh, oh, we lost, we just lost you briefly. You said you wanted to, can we still hear you? Can you still?
Yeah, can you hear? Yeah, so we want to sell lot one. The four, less than. It's unstable, I'm not sure why. To sell that lot and then keep the other lot out back for, for ourselves, for our son.
Okay, alright. And right now, the, so really what you're, what the A, the effect of the A and R is to create lot one out of the existing much larger parcel.
Correct.
Okay, very good. I believe I did ask you this question, so that you're, the, the idea is that there is going to be this strip of land between this newly created lot one and the abutter to the south. Alright? Do you know offhand the width of that strip?
Do you know the width of the strip? He started hearing, that's why I'm repeating.
I believe it was like fifty feet.
And I think that the reason I, so I believe we can endorse this irrespective of whether what you end up creating with your back lot is buildable or not. We don't, you know, by endorsing an A and R, the planning board doesn't assert that the resulting parcels are buildable. Just to be clear. And what's not under the planning board's control are the highway department regulations pertaining to driveways. The reason I bring this up because it came up recently is the way, the town of Waitley highway regulations require that driveways, welcome, that driveways be set back at least twenty feet from all lot lots. Alright?
Correct.
So whatever this width is, you have to welcome. You have to carve off twenty feet on either side. So, and then you need enough width left to build a driveway that will pass muster with a highway department.
Right.
And what's, you know offhand, what's the minimum requirement of width? Of course, there's width of the actual driveway plus.
Driveway is a pretty standard on ten, twelve feet wide.
And twelve feet, so if it's about, how, how wide did you say it was Mike?
You're thinking, what are you looking for? You're thinking it's.
Can you see that number number?
But I understand that by carving up lot one and leaving this extra little bit, if you can see my mouse moving Cindy?
Yep.
Obviously, your intention is to create their, leave the right amount of frontage.
Correct.
With the idea that, you know, you're, you're dealing, you've, you've met frontage, you've met minimum lot size and all of that. But if you cannot, if you're not legally allowed to build a driveway down this strip that course, that complies with the town of Waitley's highway, right, driveway regulations, then you will effectively have a non-buildable lot because you won't be able to create access from the right way. So that's why I'm asking, we don't, we can, I think we can just endorse this regardless of the answer, but you could be left with something that is not what you want.
Yeah, their end use is relevant to us for their.
Yes, your end use, well put, is you can carve up your land in any kind of crazy way you want, up to the limits of what's allowed under the bylaws for A and Rs. But I was just looking at that strip, since the actual width of it is not marked on your plan. And I was just concerned that my house would be this too narrow.
No, it's at the other house.
I, I actually don't know and have to scale it. I asked Randy to make sure it was big enough.
Well, we can just endorse it and sign the MIR and then we can confirm it with Randy. And if they need to do something, I, JD knows about applying for waivers, I think it is possible.
The variance, yeah.
Randy can always make it wider, as long as we have enough frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. So, so we can endorse it before they pay the registry fee and get it registered, they should, they should check this out. And if they need to come back, we can endorse another one.
Right, right, is that clear? So you understand what we're, what we're dealing with here?
Yep.
Alright, so Walt's in your cart to, to check the driveway regulations and, and explore what your options.
Just talk to Keith, you know, Keith Birdwell will, will be able to explain it for you.
But you'll definitely need to know accurately what that width is on your plan. Okay?
Yep.
So my own.
Yeah, I've read a plan, I've scaled it and I know what, what it is.
Okay. So my own inspection of the plan and a review of the A and R requirements and the bylaws. I see Sarah, Sarah, you're letting Brett into the, into the meeting. But it looks to me like this.
Yes.
Otherwise meets all of the requirements for us to endorse it under as an approval out of fire. Is any questions or comments about that? Judy, you good?
Yep.
Sarah, you good?
I'm good.
Okay, then I would like to hear a motion to approve this plan for endorsement under A and R, as an A and R.
I'm going to approve this plan as an, for an A and R.
Okay, so I'll give the, I'll give the motion to JD on that one.
I'll second it.
Okay, I heard Sarah, I heard Sarah wins the second. Okay, motion taken, David, seconded. We're going to do the roll call vote, it is, yes.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Brandon is yes, so it's approved, endorsed unanimously, signed this off. So your mission here, guys, is done, we'll get back to you when everything's signed and ready for you to pick up at town offices. And if you need to come back to us for a new A and R with a new adjusted plan, you let us know. Just another fifty bucks. Excuse me JD.
Aside from them, but just this particular case.
Yes, this AR, whatever area. Well, the AR, AR one, AR two boundary is not marked on this plan, however, you guys might want to hang, you might want to hang for what's coming up next.
Yeah.
Because you may be affected, well, you're, you are probably not affected because their remainder lot is so large.
Okay.
They won't be affected by the, the minimum lot size issue.
But they don't have the frontage.
They, yeah, they would benefit from the amendment. So you guys probably do want to hang for this, for what's about to come next. Even if you just have something better to do. What would be better than that?
Well, they thought they were going to be after the hearing anyway, so.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so we're done with A and R. And so I'm going to get rid of, take this plan off the screen. Stop my share. Okay, so the next item on our agenda, oh, we can't do this yet. You can't start the, I thought we would take at least fifteen minutes.
We could talk about.
For five fifteen, it's only five twelve.
We could talk about the awards.
Oh yes, the awards. Wait, what are we talking about? Which awards are we talking about?
How to distribute the beautifully framed ones that you have.
I was thinking, why don't we instead just slip in the, the approve revised codification amendments to the subdivision regulations, because that should be fast. Okay. That's so easy. Alright, let me bring that.
What if they can hear us?
Let me bring that, who is that?
I was supposed to be muted, sorry about that.
Okay, that sounds good, well, we heard you, so in case you're curious. Alright, so this is something not very relevant to any of you, but what I'm sharing on my screen, so from the town clerk to remind everyone, we will see some proposed, town clerk proposed edits, changes in wording to material in our subdivision regulations. At our last meeting, we were confused about some of the references that seemed to be wrong. Laura did us a great service by going through the existing subdivision regulations with a fine-toothed comb, identifying the differences, circulating all of that. And so what we have here is a marked up document that I'm going to now just basically turn into simple markups, so we can just see the final versions of this. Right, where the red lines in the left column indicate where changes were made. So, and I've confirmed all of these corrections. So this, so these sections referred to do indeed contain, for example, for the first one, those two sections, two thirty-four, five E six, blah, blah, blah. They do in fact contain the strip, the text superintendent of streets. So we're approving that that be changed to highway superintendent and so forth. We had a discussion there, what, Michael, Mike Bousa is going to be admitted, right? Sarah is monitoring, monitoring that, right? The one thing that we decided not to do, there was a proposed change in one of the sections where you found the corrected, the correct section, and it can, there's one use of the term building commissioner in the subdivision regulations. The town clerk had proposed that that be changed to building inspector. We had our discussion and concluded, no, 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 it really should be the building commissioners. The one who has the right training and has the best authorization to do what's involved for that.
And actually spoke with Jim Hawkins about that.
And he agreed, and he's a building commissioner.
He's building commissioner.
Alright, so we deleted that proposed change sent to us by the town clerk in terms of what we're going to approve. Alright, any questions? So, so first of all, any questions about this? We will have to vote. Is there, are there any questions from any member of the public who finds it light as the next? I know. Welcome to our world. Okay, so if there are, right Judy, you're quiet, Sarah, you're quiet, alright. So then I think all we need to do, and somebody needs to move to approve, what would the motion be here?
I will move to approve the amendments and thank you so much Laura.
Approved to move, well, I think you want to say to approve the codification.
Codification corrections.
I second that, okay. So we have a motion to approve the codification amendments. That's, that was, just, did I get that right? Approved the codification amendments.
As amended by this, by the planning board.
Okay, and that was, and Judy seconded, Sarah made the motion, Judy seconded it. So we'll do our usual roll call vote.
JD, JD seconded.
I seconded. You seconded. Yes. So JD, you're voting yes, Laura?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Brandon is yes, okay, motion.
Observation, Brandon. I think that, Brad, I think
Yes.
The number of corrections that's had to be made indicate that Amy is using the wrong version of the subdivision regs.
Probably, so I will make sure she's, the, the, you used the version that's posted on the website.
Yes.
So where she got.
She probably used the ones that were in the previous general bylaws.
On her desktop, that's not.
Yeah, alright, I will diplomatically point that out and make sure she's using the right version. So applying these corrections to the, to the proper version. Alright, I think we're ready to close this agenda item, and now it being five eighteen, go to the, you know, the main event. So it's five eighteen, I'm going to open a public hearing for proposed zoning changes to clarify dimensional requirements for lots in agricultural residential district two with frontage in agricultural residential district one. You see Mary's coming in.
Got it.
So what I'm going to do here, I'm going to exert some executive authority here and I want to share a set of charts that I put together on this issue that I think not only explain and clarify the proposed amendments that we've, we advertised, we posted more than two weeks ago that are the subject of tonight's discussion. That though, I, but I believe I've also identified an area of concern and something that is not yet fully addressed by these amendments. And I think there are actually stakeholders potentially in this room and fully, at least we should have this discussion. Alright, so let me just try to whip you through these slides and take questions. Interrupt me with questions as we go. So first little bit of background is we're dealing with situations where there's a lot that is divided in some way by the AR one boundary. So in our zoning bylaws, AR one, agricultural residential one is defined as extending four hundred feet back from the right of way on any existing property. Okay? So that can effectively, in my diagram here, split a lot as it's done into two portions, which you could think of as an AR one portion and then AR two portion. Right? Now, when such splitting occurs, the, it seems like the location of the use, like if you're putting a house in that lot, the location of the use within the lot determines whether the use is in AR one or AR two. So I've depicted here an example of a split lot, I mean, a conceptually split lot with a dwelling in AR one and thus that's, that's an example of a use in AR one. If you move that dwelling or that structure into the AR two portion, you now have a use that is in AR two. Same lot, you just put the structure in a different location within the lot.
That is interpreting the word use to, to assume where the house is located.
Yes, and there's nothing in our bylaws that explains this.
The word use.
That's right. However.
I mean, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, it's, it's important, there's a little footnote down there that says, I'm making this, this is really, in fact, this wording is more appropriate. This statement is really more of an assumption that it's based on what the building inspector has concluded looking at our bylaws. And if, there are also examples in our bylaws where our table of use regulations makes a distinction between uses in AR one and AR two. With certain, certain uses, if they're in AR one are permitted, but they're not permitted in AR two or vice versa. So there's precedence for this interpretation in our bylaws. But there's no specific language that explains how you would make this decision, which arguably in and of itself is a problem. However, I've looked at some surrounding other town bylaws and I've not yet found any language that's speaks to discriminating or determining when some, when a use is in.
It's only a problem if someone has a problem.
Right.
It's not necessarily a problem.
Right. So, moving on, the way our bylaws work is that the location of the use in the lot will determine how our table of use regulations and our table of dimensional requirements will be applied to determine compliance with ZEN. So where you place the structure relative to this boundary will bring different rules into scope. And that's where we get into some counterintuitive effects. We have proposed to address this, and I haven't actually gone through some of the scenarios, but tonight's public hearing is about what I've depicted here, a proposed amendment to the table of use regulations. So this is what we posted. It's an amendment that takes the form of two different new footnotes. One footnote with two asterisks and another footnote with three asterisks. So let's address the first footnote and you'll see where it applies, it's used in the table. Let's take the example of the eighty thousand square foot minimum lot area for, for uses in AR two on lots served by public water. So the, the effect of the, this amendment is to say that where a, when it comes to lot area, or for the eighty thousand, it just says where, where a lot has frontage in AR one, the area within the AR one, within AR one may count towards the minimum lot area. So just to, to back up, one of the things that was confusing is when you split a lot into these two portions and now you're computing minimum lot area, do, do the area in both portions count for the minimum lot area? That was not specified in the bylaws at all, they're silent on this, this issue. And so the, the, the two asterisks say that, all they say is that whatever area in the lot is within AR one counts towards the minimum lot area. Okay, so basically the whole lot counts for minimum lot area. That wasn't the issue that affected, or potentially affecting Kaylee and Red Bean. Their issue was all about a frontage. When their use was put into beyond the four, the four hundred foot area, put into the AR two zone of their lot, that created a frontage issue. Because there is a lot without public water. And normally, if the use is in AR two, you require three hundred feet of frontage. So here, there's a pair of these three asterisks, footnotes, usage, where it says where the lot frontage is in agricultural residential one, where the lot, whatever, again, to go back to this picture. If on the left side of that lot, you imagine that's Weber Road or some road, where the lot has frontage in AR one, then the minimum requirements of that zoning district will apply. So the way this amendment would work is that if you have a use in AR two and you're a lot with public water, normally you'd require two hundred feet of frontage. But with this proposed amendment, if approved, only a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage will be required. That's the effect of the footnote. Similarly, for lots without public water, like along Weber Road, instead of three hundred feet of minimum frontage, this amendment would allow only two hundred feet of frontage. Right? Do we understand what this, each of the amendments do? So, there's this point that I want to make that location matters here. Placement of a structure within a lot relative to this boundary may still lead to counterintuitive non-compliance with ZEN. What I'm going to show you, this will have to do not with frontage, but it's going to have to do with water. And it's only certain kinds of lots that are going to be affected by this. I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you what will seem like a very theoretical or hypothetical where this could happen. But if you bear with me, I'm going to show you a case where I think either it could happen or we, it almost happened. And it's with, um, Brandon and Ray. Yeah, okay, so let me show you the, here's just, just so we know, here's a safe scenario. Scenario one, a lot with public water. Just imagine, I've, I've created, I've crafted a little example, right? Here's an eighty-eight thousand square foot lot, you know, four hundred feet back from the road. It's a square, you know, rectangular lot. Everything's copacetic with this lot, without any new amendments that the table of eventual warrants. This is fine. With the use, with the dwelling within four hundred feet of the road. Now we move the dwelling beyond the four hundred foot boundary. Now, under current zoning, before what we're doing, dealing with tonight, the two hundred foot minimum frontage would not be satisfied. And just by moving the dwelling back there, you would basically, you can't do, can't build up, you have to put your house within four hundred feet. Now, but with the proposed amendment, we now have added the frontage. So we've, so this is what our amendment is following. And this was the scenario that in fact brought us to this, to even try to do this in the first place. But let's continue. Here's a, here's a scenario, one of the same, still a lot with public water. Here, I've just changed the dimensions a little bit. Now, it's a, it's an L-shaped sixty-eight, seventy K square foot lot. As you can see, we put the dwelling more than four hundred feet back into the AR two area of this particular lot. Now this would fail zoning on both conditions, even with the amendment. You amended, you, now this meets minimum frontage with the amendment. But by placing the dwelling in that back part of the lot, now it fails the AR two minimum lot area requirement of eighty thousand square feet. So just by deciding, for whatever reason, you're going to put your house further back from the road, I can say that, that's not allowed by, by zoning. I want to continue. That was the scenario, the three examples with public water. Same thing happens in lots without public water. Here's a bigger area. This is all fine. You've got a hundred thousand square foot lot. You've put the dwelling close to the road. It's within the A R one area, sixty thousand square feet minimum lot is all you need. Two hundred foot minimum frontage is all you need. Move it back. Now you've got this problem. So. Here's the thing. So for Kaylee and. I'm getting them all confused here. Kayla and Brett. They have the necessary frontage. They moved their dwelling back into that A R two area. And with the amendment, with the area, they have enough area. But I want to show you, so.
Just remember one thing.
Yep.
And I don't mean to cut you short.
Yeah.
That there's an awful lot of bylaws in the town of Waitley and every other town in the Commonwealth.
Right.
You, we could be here for awfully long time if we wanted to look at every scenario that could possibly.
Really get it.
So, I mean, you're just creating random lots out of your head.
Well, but let me show you.
Which is, which is fine. I appreciate what you're doing, but remember, every, we could go back to. Anyone.
So you're still seeing like what I'm sharing? So this was an A and R that the. That the planning board approved in twenty twenty-two for Brandy and Brett. This particular parcel could have the problem that I just described. If they had, and I don't know exactly where they placed their building relative to that lot. But you will notice it's, the area of parcel A in this A and R is under a hundred and twenty thousand.
But you have to remember, when that lot was, when that lot was cut out, it was cut out with. The current bylaws in mind, and that's why it was cut out like that. And that's why the house was located where it was. Brett and Kaylee's, on the other hand, became the confusion with, hey, if we're going to put the driveway over here and do all that. Then it should be this road frontage. So what I'm saying is, yeah, that lot could have had the problem. So could about twenty other ones in wait. If the bylaws were what they were then versus what they are now and in the future.
Well, what I just described was true at the time of this A and R. It just, nobody knew that it was there at the time they A and R it.
Remember what I said?
They decided they had to put their building in the back part of that lot, they could have been stopped at that.
Remember what I said earlier? Nothing's a problem until someone has a problem.
Well, right, that's why we're, but so, yeah, go ahead Judy.
Maybe we could clarify this a bit. I don't think there was any intention in creating these two. Changes, these two footnotes to make every split lot buildable. Which is, I think, what Harlan is saying. What we did is try to clarify what the planning board had intended when it created A R two. And that was simply, if it was a split lot, to, to use with frontage in A R one. To recognize that A R one frontage counted and also to count the parcel, the part of the lot. That was in A R one. Towards minimums in A R two. We definitely tried to make lots in A R two bigger. So the fact that. At, when we created A R two, so the fact that some lots may not meet the minimum dimensional requirements. Was actually deliberate.
And that, that makes sense because I believe their purpose and intent was to make the lots bigger.
Yeah, it was to make the lots bigger so as to encourage cluster zoning. And if you clustered zoning, you could actually have bigger density than you could have in A R one before we created A R two. So we corrected the two things. That needed clarification. There's, there's no intent to make every split lot buildable.
So I, what I, what I think I'm trying to do is point out that these scenarios can occur. We can decide, so I think what, what, what I feel has happened is that. If we didn't recognize this problem until Kaylee and Brett came along. And now we are making an effort to correct the frontage issue. I've identified, I think, cases where, what maybe, the, the question I really am trying to get at is. Is this a desired, is this effectively a land use policy? Now that we know that by simply moving a structure within a lot relative to this boundary. There are some unknown number of situations where. People will no, will not be able to build. They may get an A and R. We may or may not remember to warn people. Like, there's nothing in the bylaws that says, when we, just like we did with the Maras. We can say, you can carve up your land any way you want. Or not, and we don't endorse it as buildable. But there's, it's really not easy to find in the bylaws, this particular situation. And know that if you've carved up your land in a certain way. And then you try to build a building and put your, put your house.
But a lot of what you're doing.
I think, if, I think if you have a registered engineer, he should be able to point this out.
But, but I mean, like a lot of what you're doing, Judy uses the word often that I like is intent, you know? And like you left out probably five, six or seven other examples. That would have been contrary or supportive of this. And what if someone's house for wetland reasons, for right away, what if their house isn't? What if the front of it's in A R one and the back of it's in A R two? What if the septic design goes to A R two? What if their porch comes out on A R one? I mean, you could, we could be here all day long.
Right.
Looking at this. So that's why I say, I don't think you're ever going to get anything to cookie cutter match. But your adjustments meet what the intent originally was of the A R one and A R two, I believe.
I think, if I could interject.
Please.
What you proposed, in my opinion, is just creating greater flexibilities for people to have options to. Put structures, homes, what have you, on these properties that may, for whatever reason, necessitate that. Buildings are in A R two, maybe topography, wetlands, what have you. And in my opinion, if we're able to create some flexibility for people to be able to do that. I don't really see a problem with it. And I think that this is a minimal change, really. And I think that it's going to. Support our intention, which is to help people get to the place that they want to be if it's within our power to do so. So, um, I know we're not looking for motion yet, but I don't see any big problems with it.
My concern.
I would like to say, Brett, I appreciate you putting this up though, because it does explain to other people, anyone who might be watching. But I think what you were trying to get at is, it, it would be nice to know this at the very start. Instead of after thousands of dollars spent on things.
Right.
Um, to know where you actually land, whether this possibly could work or in no way could.
Well, and to your point, especially for somebody who is maybe looking to move to town. From, maybe from the Boston area and they know nothing about Waitley and they're looking to buy a piece of broad land. They spend a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars on this piece of land that they find out. Six months later, they can't put a house on and they live two hours away and now this is like worthless. So, I think if we can avoid those situations, why shouldn't we try to?
I mean, I'm, I'm definitely prepared to drop this. There is a simple, like, I'm, I'm supportive of it. I would personally vote for the existing amendment as a, just a direct politician. I want to point out to everybody, though I know that this raises other potential arguments. If, if you are at all concerned about wanting to fix both problems. Meaning allow not only frontage, but allow, give, allow the flexibility for structures to be moved within a lot. Relative to this line. It is a relatively simple relaxation of the proposal, though Judy will not like it. All right, and I'll just simply point out, I'll just. Go back to my. Show you what, explain at least what that is. I'm now again showing you the proposal, the amendment that is up the floors tonight. So if you amended this as follows. Imagine deleting. The footnote that has the two asterisks, just deleting it.
Okay.
And just for the moment, just to make it simple. Put three asterisks after the eighty thousand and the one twenty thousand. What this would say, down in that, this would be, this would actually be allowed to. Because it would be effectively making this proposal less restrictive rather than.
But it, you shrank the lot size.
What I would, what that amendment would say is that if there was a lot. That had frontage in A R one. But the use was moved for whatever reason into the A R two portion. That now, and we're to say we're dealing with a lot with public water. Then instead of eighty thousand square feet of minimum lot area. Only forty thousand square feet of minimum lot area would be required. The existing footnote, the two asterisk footnote. Only says that you can use area for both A R one and A R two combined when computing minimum lot. If you discarded that and basically said that. If a lot has frontage in A R one. Then the minimum lot size for A R one applies to that lot.
That, that almost meets the purpose of A R two.
That's been the argument, and I recognize it. I don't entirely understand.
I think that's a total, I think that's a total change of the bylaws, the proposal, Brett. I think that's beyond what we can do by, by amendment in a public hearing. You'd have to, you'd have to re-advertize.
Well, I mean, I think that claim needs to be adjudicated. And I don't, I've heard this claim made that that kind of amendment, here to the table of use. Judy used the word eviscerate the open space cluster development bylaw. Which was the purpose for creating A R two in the first place. I can, I have studied that particular bylaw and it's. I can't say, I don't know the answer to that. Brett, or.
Land in A R one, A R two taxed differently?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
What I don't know, so I, I feel like the board has before, and I, I see that Mike Bousa has a question. So I'm gonna. We'll, we'll get to questions in a moment because I want to finish this. I feel like the board has some options before it. It simply acknowledged that this situation exists where if you move your structure within a lot. Put it beyond the A R one boundary, then you need much bigger lot sizes. But frontage, A R one frontage seems to be okay. We could say, we're good with that. We think there might be cases that come up where somebody may want to. Put their building, they have a, they have something in the A R one portion. And they need to build their, put their dwelling up in the A R two portion, but they don't have a lot area. At least somebody's going to turn off their light. Then the planning board would have to be in the situation of saying. We know that that could have happened, but for, for whatever reason, you're not allowed to do that.
I, I, I think, I think you're really confusing us here. You keep talking about moving the house from here to there.
Yeah.
I think typically, when people buy lots.
Yeah.
Or in, in the case of the beans here, when, when they cut out lots, they do that. With the idea in their head where they want their house.
Yes.
And so the lot that they are looking for and to cut out and of their main property or to purchase. If they know where they want their house, they already know. With the, you know, with this, what they need for boundaries and whatnot.
Right.
And I think that's kind of important to consider here because when you shrink. To me, this is a more thing about lot size, not frontage. The frontage seems out of whack to me if, if we weren't even involved. Just because, like in our case, we're not putting another driveway in and why should the frontage change whether your house is there or here?
Right.
To me, the A R two really represents a larger lot size. And, you know, if you're going to buy a lot, you're going to make a lot. You know if you want your house.
That's true, Kaylee and Brett, right? But this didn't even come up until we pointed this out to you.
A hundred percent correct. And that's why we're here for these amended changes because the road frontage.
But isn't that the counter argument? Then this would be a case where they knew, Kaylee and Brett knew where they wanted to build their house. And they were ready to go ahead.
In which case, ten years from now, five years from now, or a hundred years from now, when somebody wants to move their house. They're going to have that argument and they're going to have to come to the planning board at that point and say, hey, this is, this is what we're looking to do. I just, as a, this is as a towns person, this is not as someone who wants to, you know, their son and daughter want to build a house. As a towns person, general public here, I would not want to see the lot, the lot frontage for an A R two shrink that significantly. I like the A R one.
You mean, you, you like, you would not like to see the lot size.
That's right.
You would, you feel that the lot frontage.
Larger lot size.
If a lot fronts in A R one, that A R one frontage ought to apply. But if the design of the, the layout of the land use means whatever you're going to do, the building is in the A R two portion. You like the idea that the lots, the overall lot size is.
I'd be willing to bet when this, when, when this was constructed and Judy and others on the board. I'd be willing to bet that the frontage issue was probably ancillary or insignificant or hey, let's, you know, just hold it out. They meant for a problem or perceived problem or a future development issue on lot size, not road frontage. And they corrected and established that with the A R one and A R two. The road frontage, in my opinion, is, is, is like, you know.
Insignificant?
Insignificant. You know, it, it was the lot size that was the issue. They corrected it. Yes, we're here to.
We had actually assumed that we were dealing with developments in A R two and that roads would be built. And that the frontage would be on those new roads. And that's what we're talking about.
Somebody seemed to have marked out, okay, well, that's just mine. What I, I feel like I've said my piece. All right, I wanted to put this out there and then this is what we're doing. We're having this meeting for. So I want to, what I want to do next. Is to see if there are any other comments or questions from members of the board. And then I would like to, if, if there are none, Sarah, Judy. And what I'd like to do is.
Mike, I have a question.
Yes, that I want to open it for questions from, questions and comment from the public. So I see that Mike Bousa has raised his hand. So, Mike, please, you've got the floor.
Thanks. It seems like there's a lot more language in here than there really needs to be. In that it is total lot size. Could cover this, not denoting A R one versus A R two breakout in any way. And then a simple footnote that is, the frontage requirement is based on the zone in which the frontage exists. Because it seems like that is the intent here, right? Because there are, there are roads in A R two in town and. And that, but I think that clarification is that the, where the frontage exists, that is the minimum frontage required. That seems to cut, kind of cut to the chase, as I understand it, that's what we're trying to get to here?
So I don't know, are you proposing any changes in language that what we can't really do is take a whole brand new approach here now? Are you suggesting the change?
No, I think, I think that, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is putting plain language for my understanding of what is written in the document, which is, i- and it seems like this is what we're trying to get to, that if you have a lot that has both AR one and AR two coverage, but the frontage is in AR one, the AR one frontage minimum applies. If you want to build in the AR two area, the AR two acreage or minimum lot size applies. I think that is, I just want to make sure that I am understanding clearly, because I've been going back and forth a little bit with Jim Huckins on this, and that is what he thinks that is, is the case. And so I just want to make sure that that is also what the board is clear on.
I believe that that is, hold on a second, Judy. I believe that that is exactly what this amendment to the table of dimensional requirements accomplishes. It says that if a lot has frontage in AR one, then AR one lot frontage rules apply, depending on whether it's served by public law or not, and if it's in, and then, but acreage is applied based on whether they use it in AR one or AR two.
Perfect.
So I think, I think you're both correct.
Yeah, yeah.
I think what Michael's saying is a great point. It could have been done with verbiage and language. We did it, you did it differently here, but it accomplishes that same thing.
As long as it's accomplished, don't change the language and have to open it back up.
Yeah, yeah, no, your, your understanding is correct, and we believe that this language achieves that effect. I can't always see, are there any other comments or questions from any members who will follow?
Brandt?
Yes.
Unless you have side lot access, the frontage is always going to be in AR one, correct?
No, I think the intent is if you build it, if you are starting in, if you're building a road in AR two, when you lay it out, you need the acreage that's in AR two. After that, it may become AR one. But it's not, it's not initially.
Okay, so if you're putting in another, if you're putting in a new road, then it could be, okay.
So this is the zoning map, and the green areas in the, so there are, and I don't unfortunately know enough about some of these other roads, but clearly AR one extends not along every, every road and way, but I guess these are, there's some.
Yeah, and you kind of was sort of, you put in a new road, well, yeah, so, right.
So I've always understood it to be every town, every public way, if a, if a lot has frontage on a public way, then it's, and it's frontage is in AR one.
Right, and four hundred feet back from the road would be the AR one.
That's right. And so for these roads that go off, that lead away, say, from Haytonville Road or what, whatnot, those, whatever those, whatever the status of those roads, or are they not, say, good ways?
The one, and the reason it's defined in terms of lot frontage is because of the I ninety one. You need to have access from the road, so, so AR one does not extend either side of I ninety one.
Okay. Okay, so that's who's on that. Okay. Okay, then, um, stop sharing. Emotional? Yeah, so well, not yet. I think, I think the next thing I do is I close the public hearing. Closing the public hearing at five fifty six P M. Okay, so this is where, so do we have anything else that we want to discuss about this? I'll say, continue to have reservations about this situation, and I certainly support the amendment. If everyone's comfortable with it, then I support the amendment as drafted.
I make a motion to amend the zoning bylaws to clarify the frontage and minimum area requirements of lots in agricultural residential district two, the frontage in agricultural residential district one.
Motion's the main. Judy second, Judy gets the second on that one.
Who wasn't that just made that motion? I can't see.
J D.
Thank you, thank you.
Judy seconded the motion. Okay, so we'll do our usual roll call vote? J D, Laura is yes. Judy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, she, okay, yes, and Brandt is yes. All right, so the motion, yeah, listen.
God has to go to town beating that, right?
Uh, yeah, we'll talk about the, um, we'll talk about what we have to do next with all of the bylaw revisions that we approved to get them over to the select board for, for, for the consideration. All right. That's off, that item is off of our agenda. We're ready to move on to the next item tomorrow.
You guys can bring moments this time.
We did not, sorry, sorry. All right.
Have a good night.
You have a good night, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think what I want to do next is, um, we've done the codification, done that, oh, cool. So let's do the amendments to common driveway and side lot access special permit application. So. Do a screen share.
You other guys don't really want to sit through this, believe me.
Yeah, yeah. Here's the, okay, very good. All right. So what I've, what I've done, I wanna, for, for discussion. This was the first, the, the Alien grit being special permits, where the first time in a long time we've done this, and it was just not a smooth process, and there's just a lot of things that were unclear. And in particular, I would say, the cost associated with advertising was significant. And then on the order of nearly, I think it was nearly that, nearly nine hundred dollars. All right, now, when we do, when we do public hearings for site plans, we have it in the application, the, in the application. There's language that says that the applicants shall pay the cost of advertising. Such language was not present in the application for a driveway special permit. And so, and the other thing was that the application is filled in by the applicant and then delivered to the town clerk, who often should stamp it, but there was no actual place on the form for the applicant to write in a date.
Okay.
And that just, particularly for things involving public hearings, we need good traceability about when all kinds of different things took place. So I took the original form and just revised it a little bit, so that, and I've highlighted, and that there's now a place where you can write in or type in a date. I've made no other changes. These, I have to say, in a world where mostly we, we do our forms electronically, the forms themselves seem to be formatted with the expectation that people are gonna handwrite one of them. I'm not wild about that, but I didn't adjust that. I've left all these underlines and things for people to fill it in. But I, I believe I've got all the right, all the content needed. I maybe reorganized just how it's formatted on the page for clarity.
Okay.
Um, but there's a place to put in whether you want side lot driveway access or common driveway, and, and for whatever your reasons are for that. You have different ways of indicating what the premises are. There is a street address, like in Brent, Brent Kelly's case, they didn't have a street address, but they had a zone. They definitely had a map and parcel number, right? There's an owner, cap signature, mailing address, phone, all of that. Then in the instructions, oh, there, the other thing that was confusing this up was this whole thing about the highway, the driveway regulations. So there is original language that just says familiarize yourself with the zoning bylaw, and there's that part of it's attached. But I've added, or I'm proposing to add language that just says, also familiarize yourself with the town of Waitley Highway Department regulations for driveways. Just say they're posted, they can be obtained from the highway department, and that extra sentence just to say we cannot approve a driveway special permit for any driveway unless it conforms the highway department regulations. I mean, that's, the truth is, we can't approve it if the highway department doesn't approve it, but they won't approve it if it doesn't.
Right, if it's not.
However, the board of selectmen can issue a variance for that.
That's a good one.
So perhaps, you're the rule body of that. You appeal to the selectman, you make your case, and they can decide on what they want to do.
Could we just add in then that we cannot approve it without?
Without highway department approval?
Well, without highway department approval or special, special permit from the select board, you said?
Or a select board variance.
Select board variance.
So let's try this language.
Actually, in what, the case that I had, Keith Bartwell denied it. The selectman issued the variance, then he issued me a permit. So, but, so when I got the issue, the permit from Keith Bartwell, it was approved because the selectman authorized him to approve.
So where is that? So if, so how would that affect our process? Like, does that mean we could approve a special permit for a common driveway?
Even if it doesn't conform to the standard.
Yeah, but I guess the highway department would, they would still have to send us approval, because that's part of the bylaw.
Yeah, they have to sign up, but, but the highway department, if it doesn't meet the requirements, he denies it and asks to go for.
Right.
I think what, what J D, if J D is saying is that, what we need is the special permit from the highway department, period.
We just need permission, that I approve, approval.
Yeah.
It compiles, or if it doesn't, you seek a variance or relief from the board.
Department of approvals.
So maybe that language is simpler, right? That the planning board cannot approve, and there are a lot of other things.
Because they, the highways who pretend can issue the permit if the board of selectmen is offered relief.
So if, if we had a situation where we had an application for a special permit, the highway department said, we don't approve. Well, I guess, do we deny the special permit while they go seek a variance? Because we have to take action.
I think we could continue if the, if the applicant says, we can continue. The applicant has to request it.
So, but this seems like the right language in the instructions.
I think it seems very clear.
Decisions are quick. It says in the regulations for bringing the highway department rules that they have to make a decision within twenty days of the hearing, twenty-one days of the hearing, so they get the answers quickly. In my case, they've made a decision that night.
All right, so I think we're good with this first yellow highlighted section, because that addresses this, that issue. Because of the way, go ahead, Judy.
The second, the second yellow paragraph about the fees, you took, took that straight from the site plan review application, right?
This, the items one through five were in the original um, special permit application form for the planning board.
You know, where it starts, the full cost of advertising.
Oh, yes, yes. So I, I haven't quite got there yet. I just pointed, I, I just in this, this next section with the application, the application must also, I just added must also submit because they have to, in the previous sentence, they have to submit an application with a fee, and then I said, well, they also have to submit these other things. So I just clarified that language. But what they have to submit with the application, the fee, is not, I haven't modified that. That's from the original special permit application form. And this language highlighted in yellow is what I've copied from the site plan review application. I'm assuming we can, of course, only by vote, make these kinds of changes and, and say that by putting this language in the instructions, we thereby are authorized to bill applicants for these special permits for advertising costs. Is that true to your knowledge?
That's the way we did it for the site plan interview. In fact, we were requested to do that by the town administrator.
Okay, so there's no other place in Waitley's legal, you know, rules and regs where these, these things are set. We can do this right here in the instructions.
Yeah, when we're, you're making proposals, the findings can vary about the budget for the planning board. You don't know what's gonna come in front of you for applications from the.
Right.
For any other than the applicant to bear the responsibility of the advertising costs, this, this, so they're gonna come in there.
Yeah, I think it's entirely justified, especially given how expensive it is, and the two, the advertising for the most recent special permits, again, we haven't done this since twenty ten, so it doesn't happen a lot. But still, it was essentially an unanticipated nine hundred dollar hit on the planning board's budget. And it seems entirely justified that applicants for such permits should be able pay those costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Brandt?
Did I just?
Brandt?
Yes.
Along those lines, was the original intent of the hundred and fifty dollars for each of these to cover the advertising fees?
You know, it's a, it's funny you should ask that question, Sarah, because I recently asked, I haven't asked, I'm sorry, who's, who else is speaking? Did you mute? I asked where the fee monies go, because they don't flow into the planning board, like, we don't get income. Like, we don't make money from.
So we are not a revolving fund?
We're not a revolving fund.
Okay.
It just goes into the general, like, so site planning fees go into the town conference now.
I mean, I can understand that they offset our costs, like our clerical services.
Right.
But they are double what our other fees are, and with this one, sometimes you need to double it up.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, like, I looked at Z B A, and their fees are, they're a little bit higher than they do. But it seems like the fees are not about, well, I, I don't know entirely what the fees are expected.
There are, there are other issues with, with public hearings. There's the clerical time to send out the letters, there's the postage, there's the time involved in preparing the legal ads and getting them set, so.
As long as this is offsetting our expenses to the town, I get that. But if the original intent with this was that that one hundred and fifty would cover the advertising fees, and now we're saying the advertising fees on top of that, it's redundant, but if it's covering our existing costs of the time it takes, I understand that. it's redundant. But if it's covering our existing costs of the time it takes, I understand that. I just want to make sure we weren't double dipping.
Yeah, we're definitely not double dipping at all.
Okay.
The, I I think the main the main costs associated with public hearings are the clerical work, printing, copying, printing the butter notices, mailing them. So here full cost of advertising, all legal notices and mailings.
It's a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we're all volunteers.
Yeah.
Our secret service. But there are some additional clerical costs.
Yeah.
Just managing this whole process and um filing and distribution. So, yeah, we are volunteers, so.
I just wanted to make sure we wouldn't need, that needed to be reevaluated.
Yeah.
So.
I think once upon a time, it might have covered everything, but it's been a long time.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So those are my only proposed changes. And so, go ahead Judy.
If you go back to the, um, where you have the address of the applicant and you made verbally the point that sometimes it's only a parcel number, perhaps we should say street address or parcel number.
Oh, like up here, street address or? That what you're thinking, Judy?
Well.
Is this what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Can I interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
I kind of like, um, asking for both the street address and the map and parcel number.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I didn't see that down below. I I was drawing my point.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there, I think there are scenarios in which both these things.
I think it's, it's not going to hurt to have more of that information to make sure we're talking about the correct property.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there any issues with if the applicant is not the owner? The owner authorizes the applicant to do this?
Well.
I know when I did my project, I didn't own the property yet. There is some property. But I was seeking permission to do everything before I closed on the property. So shouldn't we ask that the owner of the property authorize this and the applicant sign it? So two signatures?
Oh, I see. So not only signature of applicant.
But the signature.
Signature of owner.
Yeah.
I don't know. Do you need, I think it might be a question for town council. I don't know if you need standing to do this.
It's where someone's applying for something the owner doesn't know.
I think.
How we're, we'd be required to notify the owner. Okay.
Well, it's a matter of standing.
Hi, Mary.
The, the owner gets a copy of the legal notice, the same as the abutters do. It doesn't matter whether they live here or out of state.
It's part of the application for building permits. We always have to have the owner's signature and the applicant's signature.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a question of standing. Whether the applicant has the authority. And for a building permit or for an A and R, you would definitely need the owner to sign because you're actually doing something to the property. I don't know whether that's the case for for these kinds of applications. It might be a good question for for town council.
I know as this goes through the process to develop this thing, they're going to have to have when they have a building permits, they're going to have to have signatures from the owner and from the applicant.
So let me, let me just ask.
The same with an A or, the same with an A and R.
Good. Um. I just want to see for for what we just did. Sorry, give me one second. Because part of the way I'd like to answer this is that if the existing form before we make this change, didn't make this distinction, I don't know why we need to introduce a new distinction.
That's why I think it's a question for town council. Whether you actually need to have stand. The owner has standing, the applicant doesn't, if they're not the owner. But I don't know whether you need standing for this.
I mean, I do think JD has a point that if somebody's, say, somebody's renting the property and they have effective control of the property and the owner lives outstate now, or it's a trust or something like that. And they've come in with this application and we aren't necessarily aware of whatever the the lease agreement is, or we're not privy to that information, I could see it being an issue. And also, like, yes, we're going to send a legal notice, but are they going to look at it?
Yeah. I'm just looking at like the the twenty-ten application for a special permit that was, as far as I know, the last one the board handled. And it just had the signature of the applicant. It happens that the owner, I mean, the owner's identified and the applicant. I mean, I just mirrored this design.
Right.
Correct. It's just when the owner is not the applicant.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, perhaps the beans may be found songs that are not bringing this, I will try to develop it.
I would assume that it's not required for this because.
They will get a building permit.
Yeah.
But.
And then I guess the other question would be. Because I'd like to, I mean, I don't, just on the one hand, I don't feel a sense of urgency here. I don't think that we're, we're going to have many more special permits pending our doors. So we have time to get this form right. On the other hand, I I would like to just get done. We could, we could investigate this further. But one thing, how are we doing on time? I would just look to see how the ZBA application form looks. And I think if the ZBA application form doesn't have separate applicant, signatures for owners and applicants. I kind of feel like it's good enough for them or good enough for us.
I'm not sure. I don't. I don't think you can make that assumption, Brand. They're two different legal processes.
They're, but they're both under the zoning act, the same provision of the zoning act for special permits. And it doesn't speak to, I mean, I looked high and low through the zoning act for guidance on forms, and there just isn't that. And so I don't think that there's a zoning act provision for special permits issued by zoning boards versus special permits issued by planning boards. There's just provisions for special permits.
Maybe it would be best practices to just ask town council and get their official whatever decision.
If that's the consensus I have. Happy to, maybe we should just ask that question. All right. So maybe in the interest of not beating every horse that comes before us to death. Um, why not I simply, we don't have to vote on this?
Well, what we could do, what we could do is vote it provisionally based on town council's opinion. And if town council says, you're fine, then we're all set.
I like that. I like that. So Judy, do you want to make that motion?
My move that we accept the changes that Brand has made to, to the special permit application.
Pro, provisional.
Oh, conditional on town councils indicating that the owner's signature is not required.
Okay. Motion has been made.
I'll second that.
Sarah waves. So the motion's been made by Judy and seconded by Sarah. We'll do our roll call votes starting with JD. Yes. Yes, Laura?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Brand is yes. Okay. All right, I'm not sharing my screen anymore, right? Uh, wait. Okay, so now the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. And we have a slew to approve to get us caught up. So let me, yes, give me a second to just get us ready for that. We're, we're all good through twenty-twenty-three. So the first seven minutes for the approval. Share my screen again. Yeah. Now, um, so I'm sharing minutes of our meeting in January third. Oh, shoot. There was a, on my screen, I saw. Did Mike use to still have his hand up? Was there still a question?
He had brought his hand down.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right. So I sent out original minutes for January third. Judy revised them. I accepted all of her changes and sent out a new draft to all of you. So what I'm sharing here, so, so I, I kind of believe that you all saw my original minutes, you saw proposed changes. I basically accepted it all. Um. So are there any questions or comments on the minutes or any requests to changes? If not, somebody could make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will make the motion to approve the January third, twenty-twenty-four minutes.
Yeah, I don't even think I have to say amended because these are now the minutes that I've sent out.
I second that.
Okay, motions been made and seconded. Roll call. Um, uh, Sarah goes first.
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
JD?
Yes.
Laura?
I wasn't on the board yet.
You are not.
No.
Not.
So I will not go.
You are not going. Yeah, right. I mean, I guess technically you can abstain or a member now, so you can, you get to abstain.
Sure, I'll abstain.
All right, very good. And I vote yes. So four votes, four and one extension, may minutes of January third are approved. So we're going to move on to our next January thirty-first. This is the same deal as before. This was our joint planning board housing committee meeting. And indeed, again, or it was not a planning board member. Um, looks like there was Judy. I sent out minutes. Judy made a change. Ah. So this is a question for you, Judy. So I had trouble, Judy suggested under documents reviewed on file of the planning board that we need to put a date. So sort of a less, more like, Judy, do you know the date? There's so many different revisions of the community housing by law that went around. Do you have a date?
Well, I suggested using the, the date of the email prior, immediately prior to this meeting.
You mean that, well, I know, but I had trouble figuring out what email and I couldn't find an email you sent out immediately prior to Jan. So I was really asking you to just find that and give me a date. If we want to table this for now and go back to it. But I, um, I don't know what the, the date is. And when you were sending drafts of your bylaw around, the drafts themselves did not have dates within them.
Yep.
All right, so we will table this, the minutes for January thirty-first pending a date from Judy for that particular meeting draft. We're going to move on to February twenty-eighth. Laura Ross, first time on the board, all right? All right, again, went through initial Judy's revisions by accepting those revisions and circulating a new draft. I don't think there was anything left. So unless there either comments, questions, proposed revisions to the minutes of February twenty-eighth meeting. Sarah was there. You can hear a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty-eighth.
Okay, motion has been made. Second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, I'll give that to Laura. Motion made and seconded by Laura, made by JD, seconded by Laura. Roll call JD.
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Brand? Yes. Judy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, minutes of February twenty-eighth are approved. Moving on to, um,
February twenty-seven.
March twenty-seventh. Here, we did get a new, thanks to Mary. We have one more change again. What Mary did, because this meeting was inadvertently not recorded. Um, Mary thankfully recorded the key, um, times when things happened. So basically, we're going to say that public hearing opened up at five oh two PM, which is the same time as the meeting was called order. Mary noted that we closed that public hearing at five twenty-eight at G U. And then we did the next public hearing at five fifty PM. Closed it at six twenty-seven PM. And adjourned the meeting at seven sixteen PM.
What became of item seven, the one oh five Christian light?
I'm sorry, the light?
One oh five Christian light, it became the.
Item seven.
Additional items not, attorney Margot Welch planned one oh five Christian light.
Oh. Um. So this is not related to, so it may be that I, did I not circulate that letter?
I don't know.
It doesn't.
Doesn't.
It does not relate to whether we can approve the minutes or not. It could just mean that you have a really crappy chair who didn't do what he said he was going to do at this meeting. But, um, there's been no follow-up.
She was, she was asking for a zoning interpretation.
Okay.
And I think it should, Brett probably, probably referred her to either the building inspector or the ZBA or both.
I think that was the character.
She's still circulating that, but the minutes are accurate in, in that aspect. And I did what Judy suggested, been trying to make these minutes a little bit more a little bit more self-standing. So I've included as appendices the bylaw revisions that were discussed versus embedding the text. So unless there are other comments or suggestions, so now we could have a motion to approve these minutes as amended.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-seventh as amended.
Motion's been made, the seconded by JD. Uh, roll call vote. I'll go to the, go to the callers. Uh, Sarah. No, Sarah was not there.
I will abstain.
Yes. Yeah, I guess you might well abstain. Um, Laura, I'm not Laura, not Laura. Judy, Judy?
Yes.
Uh, JD?
Yes.
Laura?
Yeah.
Brand? Yes, okay. Minutes are approved with one extension for May, March twenty-seventh. And that, except for uh, the, what we've tabled from the February twenty-eighth meeting gets us all caught up because we don't have meeting minutes for tonight. Okay. So now we're into the, um, additional items not anticipated. Enjoy it. Time in our meeting. Stop sharing. Um, so Judy has reminded me that she, her term on the planning board is up on June thirtieth. And I understand, Judy, your intent is not to go for another round with us.
Correct.
Has took that curiosity. Has, took that with curiosity. Have you shared that with the town moderator?
Yes.
So, so we'll start thinking about a replacement. Now Judy sits on two. There are a number of situations where other committees ask for representatives from the planning board to be at the desk. So for example, I do, I sit on the Franklin Regional Planning Board as the representative of the Waitley Planning Board. I sit, that's an exterior committee. I sit on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee as the planning board representative. Judy sits on the CPC, uh, that's what, the Community Preservation Committee.
Yep.
And you, and you also sit on the, the
Exit thirty-five. Exit thirty-five.
So the, the question will be upon Judy's departure. Will anyone, uh, one of us replace her on CPC?
I'll take the CPC for the next year.
You will, after?
Oh, good for you, Sarah.
Judy, could you just say a little bit, I'm curious myself, what the CPC committee does and kind of how often they need and that sort of thing? Could you give me a thumbnail, Judy?
Sure. Um, the town has CPA funds. They're generated with a surcharge on our property tax and a match from the state. And the CPC basically, uh, administers the fund application, the applications for requests for use of these funds. It can be used for open space and recreation, historic preservation and affordable housing. And every year, ten percent of revenues has to go to each of these, those three common buckets. Uh, there's about, I think roughly two hundred thousand dollars a year that comes in now. And this, the committee has a representative from the planning board, the housing committee, the historical commission, conservation commission, and two at-large positions. One is currently held by Alan Sanderson, who's, who's their chair. And the other is by tradition an ag commission member. The bylaw is written by the state, doesn't have a requirement for an ag commission, but in Waitley, it's important that they do. So, meet around the times of approving funding, so there are two cycles a year. One starts in December for the spring town meeting. Um, there's, it's like once a month through December, January, February. And then again in in summer for, for fall town meeting for what's called out of season requests, where you have to, or out of cycle requests, you have to prove that your request is urgent enough not to be able to wait until the April town meeting. So, um, and again, meet for three or four months. The other thing we do every year is approve a plan where we look at at the town's needs in terms of conservation and housing and recreation, historical preservation, each of those areas that relevant committees set their goals and priorities for the way the funding should be used. And the law requires that we do that once a year. It's a, it's a good committee. Alan runs a, a very good committee. And it's kind of fun to give out money to.
Yeah. All right, so is, this is, so Sarah's self-nominated. I think, do we, is this something we vote on or just, we just? What's been the practice in the past about this, Judy?
Well, there hasn't been a whole lot of competition, but I don't know. It's been fifteen years.
Well, why don't we just?
I would assume that you vote and then you, you, um, send the nomination to the, to the select board when the time comes.
Yeah, okay. So right now, we'll take no action on this, but it's great to know that we, that Sarah's, um,
Well, you could take action now if you wanted, but, um, if you want, that's up, it's
Yeah, and regarding the, you shared, when you share with the full board, what you shared with me, Judy, regarding the exit thirty-five study, okay?
Well, this is, this is not a permanent committee. This is a study group that's looking to try to come up with measures to revitalize the area up around one sixteen and I ninety-five and the group is, I would say, I think about halfway through the exercise. It's, it's the slowest moving committee I've ever seen, but, um, since, since we're halfway through and since it's not going on forever, I'm, I'm willing to stay on if, if people would like that rather than have somebody try and get caught up to speed, but that, that's up to you guys. If you, if you would like to have somebody else on, that's fine too.
I think continuity would be ideal, as long as there's no reason why after June thirty and you're no longer a planning board member, you would no longer be eligible to serve in that role, but I
I don't think, I don't think anybody's going to raise the issue to tell you the truth.
Um, as another item that's out there, so that's, that's, I think, where we are on those two topics. I'll put out there that, um, I'm, I would be happy if somebody were interested in taking my position on capital improvement planning. And I'll say a little bit of that. Don't be, I'm happy to stay on it because as I'm about to say, it's a very, you know, it, it doesn't, it's not very demanding. It's actually quite interesting. It meets for a very, just a few meetings in the run-up to, um, like in the budget season. And it is an advisory committee where various capital improvement requests, funding requests from various departments in the town. They're asking for different amounts of money to do different things. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee does not choose which ones to follow. All the Capital Improvement Planning Committee does is review them and bucket them into like, we really need this, like, really do this, or like, do it if you can, or maybe only if you've got a lot of extra bucks in mind, right? Like these three buckets.
I don't want the finance committee, so I don't know.
Yeah, you may not be able to do that. I'm sort of like, again, if you want, I find it gives me an interesting visibility into the town, like what's money being spent on? We weren't all about like what the fire department is doing with their upgrades, firefighting equipment and, and, and basically it's like two or three meetings, maybe you get to actually look at some stuff. And I would say the total number of hours of commitment is a handful of hours in a given calendar year. So it's, it's got the, they have to be both interesting and, um, you know, not a, a particularly heavy weapon.
I would do it if it's a lot.
Yeah. I'm not going to ask, we're going to kind of come back to it.
Okay.
Because now it's like, the action is, the pressure's packed. I did my part for the run-up to this annual town meeting.
Didn't, um, so didn't Judy have someone in mind as a replacement?
Oh, for herself on the planning?
Working with my work, yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to speak to that again, Judy, or you don't want to name names?
Well, I had talked to Mary Stewart, who I think was kind of half-interested. And I've subsequently wondered whether Harlan Bean might be interested. He seems to have a good feel for the zoning laws. But I haven't talked to, Mary Stewart lives in town. She, she was much involved with the water, with the wa- water merger. She's very good with people. Nicholas thinks she would be good. She told me that her her strength is, is broad view on things and and less so on details. But I think the details, that wouldn't hurt to have somebody with broad perspective on the committee, so I haven't talked to her recently. Um, it is dependent on her retirement and I'm not sure that, that that comes. It's sometime soon, but I don't think it's by June thirtieth. So I'll try and talk to her again.
Good diversity of viewpoints and opinions and perspective brings to strength any board.
Yeah, and, and also How, how was her last name spelled?
Yeah.
I think it's S T U A R T.
Yeah. Uh, S T E W A R T. And was there a second name?
I, I I wouldn't swear to that, but I think that's it.
And there was a second name?
Well, I threw out Harlan Bean just because I was really, really impressed at, at, at the way he seems to understand the bylaws. I think he's done enough
I agree.
There aren't people, there aren't people who come to things with that kind of understanding.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Good leads. So you have the action to follow up with Mary when it's convenient with all
Yeah, and Sarah, Sarah knows Harlan, I think.
I do, and maybe once, once I can drive again, maybe I'll go visit or give him a call.
I consider your judgment
Yeah, 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 some, some feelers, those seem like good candidates.
He, he has given a lot to the, of his time to the town in the past.
Yeah, he's a grandfather now, he must be.
Okay, um, other things that were on my list before we wind down for the night. And I, again, I, I want to socialize this versus making a decision about it. That is, turns out that for special permits, of which we don't get many, we learned that the paperwork process requires that the planning board's clerk sign off on the record of proceedings. I'm going to circulate to all of you the electronic copies of all the paperwork we've just completed for the Beans for their two special permits. There's a notice of decision and then there's a detailed record of proceedings. And the record of proceedings requires a clerk who's not the paid staff clerk, Mary. And the, the planning board never really officially had a clerk. Judy stood in for that role. It's really somebody to provide another set of eyes, I'm told. To review the paperwork for completeness and accuracy. So I'm still trying to learn a little bit more about required roles and responsibilities. We don't have, we have a chairperson. We don't have a vice chair. We probably should. We don't have a clerk. I'm, I've been looking at the ZBA's rules and regs and they describe some of their positions and authorities and responsibilities, so I'm, this is a little, a little premature.
So, since I'm new to this, do we elect a chairperson every year?
We should, I believe.
You do a fantastic job.
I haven't been even, but I would like to establish that principle that we have an annual, like, on a, every September, say, we elect our officers, whomever they may be, but we have no written rules or regs for the planning board. It's always been folklore. So I've been thinking about how some of this might be codified. I don't think we need a clerk right away, unless next month we get more applications. I hope we get this new forum up before we get any more applications for special permits because I don't want to spend more town money for advertising. So I, again, I just want to socialize. I think it would be healthy for this board to have some kind of document that lays out the role, what the roles and responsibilities are of the chair, the vice chair, the clerk and the staff secretary, at least. And there's some stuff that I can draw on and I've been starting to draft something, but I don't have anything yet.
Um, before we adjourn, will we sign my Lars' slide?
Yes, we're going to sign, we have three of us is enough to do the my Lars for the annual. And I have the stamp ready to go and I want to do this.
So Judy and Sarah don't need to come?
Judy and Sarah do not need to come to sign my Lar. Three's, three's a crowd. So with that, I don't think I have any more items not anticipated. Does anyone else have anything else that you don't want to bring up tonight? Um, regarding, uh, for just to Sarah and Judy, I'd like to just take the award topic offline because I don't think we, I think we can just do this. Yeah. Okay, great. Um, oh, well, I mean, I, again, I should acknowledge we, I sent around that Mary is retiring, whoops, she's resigning from the board at the end of May. Um, so I'm working with her to get minutes and help her clean up that. We're getting ready to post um, an advertisement to replace Mary on the planning board, so, um,
Jessica said she has too much of that.
Yeah, Jessica's not going to be able to take that, take that on, so we're going to do a, a, just a regular job posting. And once that is up, I'm going to ask everybody to circulate it, their social networks and we'll, we can talk about it. But that's going to be coming up soon.
Okay.
And would, and, and I think at our next meeting in May, which will be around the time where Mary is winding up, uh, we'll want to have a discussion about where we stand at that point and we don't have a smooth replacement, how will, like, I've been, you've noticed, I've been sort of filling in for minutes. But we will probably have another discussion in May.
The historical commission rotates among members exclude, except for the chair.
So, but I do want to take this moment to, A, publicly thank Mary for, I, I mean, I don't know how many years of service in the planning board and give you the floor to just like say anything that you feel like saying. All I know is that you've been a fixture for far longer than I've been on the board and served for
It's been fifteen years. And, um, one thing I would like to note is that, from time to time, when I used to read things in the paper, I'd see that things get contentious in some towns over, you know, what should happen or what shouldn't happen. Sometimes it looks like people may have their own agendas and I've never noticed that in Waitley and that, that was really very nice. I felt kind of bad for some of the other places where they're kind of scrappy, but it seemed to me like the people that I've worked with have always been not on a pretty good, straight-through line for doing what they think is best for the town, whether they had different opinions about what that is or not. It always seemed to be for the right reason. And, uh, I know some, some of you are, I'm, I'm quite new to, I'm still having trouble picking out your faces on these hybrid meetings because I, the faces shrink down to about a quarter of an inch on my screen and the light in the box goes with it, so I can't, and that's just for the people sitting up front. The people in the audience, they're distant and the light fades too. So that's really something that's kind of hard to deal with going forward on that. But, um, Sarah and Judy, I've been with the longest. Sarah and Judy, I've been with the longest. And I've really.
Put up with us for a long time.
Great, um, you, you've been, you've all been so supportive. It's really been uh. You know, I mean, there's, the job has become something that doesn't fit with my life anymore, but it, it had its good moments too, you know, in, in years past. And everybody was so good about, you know, working with them and, and as I said, being supportive. It's, I'm, I'm grateful for that. Uh, was nice working with smart people who knew what they were doing and seemed to get things done. And that's about it, if I'll, I'll have good memories of all of that and of both of you.
We couldn't have done it without you, Mary, that's true.
Thank you.
Well, so we'll see you again, Mary, on our next regularly scheduled meeting of the May, whatever that date is.
Wednesday of May, yeah.
May twenty fourth, do we need to discuss? Uh, it looks like May twenty ninth is the last Wednesday of May.
Okay.
I'll have our last, next planning board meeting.
I won't be. I won't be available.
Okay, you won't be available. Um, what do we need, do we need to talk about? Now that we've done all of our bylaw revisions for this annual town meeting, what do we have to do next? And we're on a bit of a tight timeline to get our piece of the work done. Judy?
All you have to do is, all you have to do is send it, I don't know whether you send it. I think you sent it to the town administrator.
So I understand we need to write a report. That provides our recommendations.
I think you just say that we. We have approved. We basically send them with our approval.
So perhaps what you and I are going to do outside of this meeting? And then, well, I'll figure out operationally how to do this without running foul of open meeting law, but um, we'll have.
What did you do last, I mean, what did you do last year?
What did I do last year? I didn't do anything last year, I wasn't involved. I believe it was you, Judy.
I, I, I just sent them to Brian.
Huh?
They sent the wording to Brian.
Well, I will investigate and see if it's more than just we send the Warren Armins up, that would be wonderful if it proves to be true. I spoke a little bit briefly earlier tonight with Lynn, and she said something about a report that explains things in a form that would be helpful to. Um. Residents of town meeting.
Okay, so that's just the little paragraph for each.
Okay.
That goes in that um. Supplement that he has.
Yeah.
And he did that, but I assume that they would much prefer that we do it, so. I can. I can try and draft that. Make, give me a list that that.
Let me, let me, let, let me hold the ball first, put some initial skeleton of a document together and then you and I'll collaborate on it, is that okay Judy?
Sure.
Okay. All right, very good. Awesome, I think that's everything we need to do tonight.
Five minutes really?
Was that? Yeah, it's almost, we still, well, that's enough time for signing, okay, so unless there's anything else crazy. Motion to adjourn?
Brandt?
Was that, yes?
I, I'm just wanting to check off things here, um, I came in. You know, at like a. Four minutes after the hearings started for the zoning changes. Did you use the preceding fifteen minutes to cover the Maraski parcel and the?
We did, we did all of that. And I'm. I mean.
Did, did that pass?
Yes.
The A N R passed you down this late. That's right, now, and I'm still, maybe you and I, Mary, will talk, cause I wanna get a sense of where you are with. The Z B A and so forth, whether you wanna do minutes for tonight or, or have me do minutes for tonight. A- as usual, this meeting's been not only, well, we've recorded it and we're generating a transcript. Which will help make the minutes easier to, to prepare. But you and I, Mary, will talk via email about if you wanna do minutes for tonight or not. Okay? The motion to adjourn. From J D, second from Laura, and I, I always believe you don't need to vote on that. Okay, so the meeting is adjourned at six, six P M.